Silly, you're good? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome to the May 2024 meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. Cheryl, you call the roll, please.
Joe Burden.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis. Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Tohman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, folks, we have a fairly packed, packed and heterogeneous agenda tonight, so lots and lots of... Ron.
Ron.
Ron. Just keep it down, Ron. Thank you. Packed agenda tonight had lots of items and I assume a lot of standing and going, like you're in church or temple or whatever religious place you're in. So please, when you leave, if you leave, if you're not staying for the duration, please be quiet and just head on downstairs and out, please. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 2024 board meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, second. Comments, deletions, corrections? There are none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Stention, motion passes. Cheryl, the correspondence from our friends... Where's Glenn? Glenn, from Glenn. Anything you want to... Yeah, please.
Dear Chairman Zuckerman and Board Members, on behalf of the applicant KTB Properties LLC, we inform you that we are not ready to resume the review of the site plan with your board. As indicated in our May... Sorry, in our April letter, we have been working on the design of the SSTS for the new building, which is nearly complete, but we have not had time to address how the location of the SSTS impacts the proposed grading and other features. Rather than submitting an incomplete package, we are advising the board of our intention to make a complete submittal for the June planning board member. Sincerely, Margaret McMann.
Ron, or Steve, do we need anything from us to... For that?
No, not at all. It's a notice from the applicant that they're not prepared.
When are you coming back, you think, Glenn? Unknown? Okay. Oh.
Is he tired?
He's an employee still. Yes, what's going on? Okay, great, great, thank you. All right, great. Town of Fishkill, I know, Steve, you're accused as you represent that town. Ron, anything you want to add about this referral and just give the board a...
Sure, the Town of Fishkill has received an application from Homeland Towers to construct a 150-foot-high monopole on the property of Lisicatos, where they have their masonry building right on the west side of Route 9, just north of the town line. It's obviously referred to you as an adjacent municipality. It's provided to you for comment only. As I describe it, it's a 150-foot-tall structure. They've included a variety of technical materials with the referral, including a visual analysis that you might have looked at. It obviously is going to be very evident in a limited area along Route 9. So I suspect visibility issues might be an issue you want to raise and you might want to offer or suggest that stealth design be considered to soften the appearance of that in areas where it is visible.
Board members, anyone have any questions? I feel this is obviously a non-binding request of our neighbors to the north. Anyone have any points they'd like to make that Cheryl can provide in writing?
Are we allowed to hold a public hearing on it?
It's not within our jurisdiction, so I don't think so.
Well, I think we should take public comment in whatever format we can.
Fair question. I mean, do we have the capability... Do we have the, I guess, the permission? I guess we can't ask our legal eagle for that. I mean, I guess what we could do is we can, at this moment, state it publicly and take some comments if people want to submit them. The deadline is when, June?
13.
June 13, so we can take comments if there's anything public. I'm fine with that. So at this moment, I'll say to the public, if you have comments on a monopole to be put at the northern end of Route 9 in Phillips Town, we will take your comments. Any...
Well, I wonder if that's enough notice because, I mean, certainly the... When Homeland Towers was putting in a... Was proposing to put in a cell tower at Nelsonville, we had just meeting upon meeting and tons and tons of people showed up to oppose it. And I just wonder if people are aware that this is happening. I, you know, I think that it would make sense to put it over and let the news trickle out a little bit and maybe deal with it at our next meeting if possible.
I mean, we... For the Town of Fishkill and the County of Dutchess.
I understand, but I still think that, I mean, it still affects a lot, an awful lot of... It's, you know, it's right on the border.
They don't need our permission to...
Understood, but why did they make a referral to us if they, you know...
Courtesy, I think, is your point. So I think, my guess is you can channel in your own words right now what you heard in Nelsonville and we can codify that, at least write it down. So if you like to use this moment to share those pieces of feedback, this is the moment.
All right, well, there was major, major opposition. Hundreds of people showed up to oppose the Homeland Tower cell tower at the cemetery in Nelsonville. It was very heavily opposed for various reasons. Environmental fear of radiation, studies that showed that it could emit radiation. The hideousness of the design was a giant, huge monopole that would be seen from everywhere and destroy the view. Was not consistent with the rural character of our community. It was there... The construction was going to cause, wreak havoc on the area. You name it. I mean, there were lots of other issues. I don't know if anyone, you know... I would suggest anybody who was present at those many hearings and opposed that cell tower. I mean, there were two lawsuits related to it that are... One of them is still ongoing, to my knowledge. Lots and lots of articles in The Current. It was very, very strenuously opposed. And I understand that this is not in the heart of Nelsonville like that was, but certainly it affects our... It affects Phillips Town.
It does?
Yeah.
It does, okay. Other comments from board members? No? Cheryl, I'll add one to this, which is something that I believe Heidi joined me when we went before the town board, pre-COVID, if I recall. So sometime in '19, I think it was. We have a... And we'll be talking about this shortly. We have a... It's not even emerging. We have a longstanding challenge now in this community and it's also in the southern part of Fishkill, which is Route 9 is an extraordinarily burdened road. And while this is not going to be additional traffic necessarily to Route 9, it certainly adds to the very commercial and almost industrial feel of Route 9, especially in an area of Route 9 in this case. In Fishkill, at least, where there's all... At that portion, you have all kinds of rock removal and large projects, even in the last 12 to 18 months, that have been torn down, a lot of trees and a lot of even the patina of a bucolic area on that stretch. So I really want to urge our friends in Fishkill, and I say the same as I said to our town board five years ago now, that we really think about Route 9 and what we do going forward. I don't think we, as a board, have much, within the current zoning, much degrees, many degrees of freedom, but I think it's time to talk about this maybe as a joint conversation between Fishkill and Phillips Town. So that's at least my individual perspective. I don't know if anyone else wants to sign on to that kind of viewpoint among my colleagues here.
I sign on to it.
That makes sense.
Okay, well, unanimity is a side of failed governance. If someone disagrees with me, please. All right, that's our commentary.
You don't like the big neon billboard they put up there?
That's more intrusive.
All right. All right, rowdy crowd. Okay, well, speaking of town board, we have a guest speaker. Where is he? There he is. Board member Jason Engel is going to come up and talk to us about the solar law he's trying to get passed. So Jason, the floor is yours. I feel like it's probably odd for you to be below. It's quite high up here.
It is very grand up there.
It is. This enormous seal, I feel quite proud.
It is a giant seal. It's nice to be down here. Thank you, Chairman Zuckerman, planning board members, for having us in here tonight. I know you all have a long agenda, so we'll keep it pretty brief. I'm representing the town board. I'm also representing the Solar Committee, which is part of the town's Climate Smart Task Force. And we have been working on a draft solar local law for the last couple of months. And so just a quick context of why we're looking at a draft local solar local law. So the state context is, New York State has set goals for 70% renewable electricity by 2030. Right now, we're at 30%. So in that sort of a ramp up, in that context, many local municipalities don't have solar regulation or solar local laws. And most of that solar is going to be permitted locally. So this effort to create a draft solar local law is to get ahead of that. In many local municipalities, it's really because of the absence of regulation as developers kind of driving the process. And so we have been sharing a draft solar local law that we based on New York State best practice model and some other examples from New York State with the Conservation Board, the Building Department, the Planning Board, before the town board kind of considers this law and carries on that conversation. And really, we're just trying to look for any expertise or comments that make this local law a better law and more easily implemented. So three kind of main purposes of this law is to maintain a clear siting and regulation process for solar installed in the Town of Phillips Town, encourage solar, but at the same time, protect environmental resources when it comes to citing solar and also deal with disposal and decommissioning of solar. And so we've been doing this, getting feedback from the Building Department Conservation Board the last couple of months, and it's improved this draft. So I want to thank Planning Board Member Joe Burden, who offered a comment which improved this related to solar on landfills and making sure they're sited safely. So thank you very much, Joe. The broad outline, before I kind of wrap up, just the thing to know is that the approach we're taking is fairly simple in the sense that any solar in Phillips Town, we kind of have two classifications of solar. What's called Class A solar, which would be solar that's installed by a property owner where the electricity is used on-site by the property. So it's being used by the property owner. And that would be treated, and this is in discussion, you know, with discussions with Greg Warner and the Building Department, as an accessory use. That sort of solar would be a permitted right as an accessory use and would be guided that way. Class B solar would be any solar that was installed that was really commercial in nature, where the solar was being sold to off-site users, which would put it at a bigger scale and that would move that permitting into a site plan process, largely come to you all, probably. And so, you know, some of the things that are in that draft local law, and I'll just see if there's any comments after that, is, you know, making a clear regulation process, which the local law does, if you all had a chance to review it, while looking at limits to tree clearing and mitigation efforts for that and other kind of protections for environmental resources. And, you know, really, it's just been an open, transparent process and everybody's made the draft better. So we were just kind of putting it in front of you. If you have comments tonight, welcome. If not, you know, that would be great if you had comments. And then the town board, Councilman Flaherty is also here and he's been kind of gung ho and leading solar in Phillips Town for a while. The discussion will move to the town board and there will be public hearings around consideration of the local law, but we're really just coming here to see if you all have thoughts. That's it.
Board members, any comments, questions, besides Joe, who's already had some good ones up here? Dennis?
Jason, there was a... One of the original draft reports that was issued to us, and I'll be honest with you, I have not had a chance to read through it.
You all have watched the reading.
Is there a... And is this an update that is... Can be re... Or issued that you're referring to?
This draft of the local law? Yes, it is.
Could that be reissued so this way?
Reissued to you all just to send it around again?
If possibly, yes.
Of course, of course, yeah. I'll get in touch with Cheryl and send that around again. Of course, yeah. And there's been some changes, so I'll add those, of course.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
Of course, yeah.
Others?
All right, here are none, Jason. Thank you very much. Thanks for your diligence and your breadth.
Thanks, Jason.
And that's that. Okay, so we're going to start our first public hearing of the night. Raise your hand if you're here to speak on Kresnicki. One, two, three, four. Okay, fine. I see no reason for any particular time limit since there's not a pressing group of folks to speak. So do you want to do the intro, please? And then Cheryl's going to read it and then we'll have the public speak.
Would it help to just give a quick summary of the project?
Say the highlights from Hamlet, please.
Good evening. Adam Thiberg, Inside Engineering, Serving Landscape Architecture PC, representing Kresnicki Plaza LLC, joined by the applicant, Tim Kresnicki, and Stephen Helms from Helms Group, the architect. So this project has evolved quite a bit in the time it's been before the board. The applicant has two businesses. One is a fencing business and the other is a heating oil business. They're looking to move their businesses to Cold Spring. So Route 9 being the commercial corridor in the area and is zoned accordingly, is the place that kind of made sense for them to look. So following a pre-application meeting with representatives of the board, an initially contemplated access to East Mountain Road was eliminated to be sensitive to the traffic concerns of the residents on East Mountain Road. So the project gains access from Route 9 only. So a code-compliant site plan was presented to the board that contemplated housing the applicant's two businesses on the site. Following the applicant's initial submission, a moratorium was put in place banning bulk storage of heating oil. So honoring the moratorium, the applicant has eliminated bulk storage of heating oil from the site plan and has presented a new zoning compliant plan. So the front building... Just rearrange here, a second. The front building and outdoor storage proposal remain essentially the same from the beginning of the project. The building will house their fencing business operation and will only provide office space and general storage to their heating oil business. Again, there'll be no bulk heating oil stored on-site. As previously proposed, there's an outdoor storage and equipment area conforming to the regulations in the HC zone. The second building will be subdivided into units and will be offered for rent as contractor offices and storage to electricians, plumbers, and similar operations. We've put together a fairly exhaustive statement of use outlining the potential population on-site as well as vehicles, number of trips, et cetera. And it should be noted that there are no encroachments into the watercourse or landscape buffers on the site. So that's just a quick kind of overview of the site plan and how we got here from where we started. So happy to respond to any questions the board or the public might have.
Generally, don't do a back and forth with the members of the public, but if there's some you can answer clearly and simply, that's not bad. So Cheryl, why don't you read the public hearing notice, please?
Landing Board of the Town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 16, 2024, starting at 7:30 PM at the Phillips Towne Town Hall, 238 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. Kresnicki Plaza LLC, 3626 Route 9, Cold Spring, New York, tax map number 17 dot dash 1 dash 43. Project major site plan. Applicant has modified their application to remove the fuel oil storage component from the project. It now involves construction of a 9,500-square-foot building in front and a 5,300-square-foot building in the rear. The applicant proposes to use the front building for offices relating to their existing fencing and heating oil businesses. The rear building would be subdivided into four units for contractor storage and office space. Also proposes an 8,800-square-foot outdoor storage area with the pertinent, sorry, driveways, parking, landscaping, stormwater management practices, a septic system and drilled well, dated at Phillips Town, New York, this 18th day of April 24, 2024.
Okay, great. So please raise your hand if you want to speak. Madeline, why don't you take the stand here, say your name and where you live, and the floor is yours. And let's just try and stay on topic if everyone, please.
My name is Madeline Sanchez McGinley. I've lived at East Mountain Road North for 21 years. I'm also an architect in New York State and I've reviewed the documents that were submitted by the applicant on the website. So my first concern is regarding the trees. The proposed existing conditions and removals plan shows taking down 93 trees, basically clearcutting the site. This will add to the recent devastating tree cutting that has left Route 9 a barren landscape. The proposed plantings, as shown in the landscape plan, barely compensate for what is going to be removed and would not provide a buffer to conceal the rather massive structures proposed. This corner is a gateway to East Mountain, one of Phillips Town's most beautiful areas. So it must be planted appropriately so there's enough shielding of the buildings. My second point has to do with the septic system. And this is, in all due respect to the civil engineers that have been hired, the proposed grading and utilities plan and the layout and landscape plan show the proposed septic field below an asphalt parking lot with parking spaces. However, the Putnam County Septic Code does not allow a septic field to be covered in asphalt, nor does it allow the field to be driven over. I'm sure the Board of Health will require the applicant to move the septic field and provide ample room for a permeable area. But given everything else on the tight site, they may not find a place for the septic field to fit unless they give something else up. The septic system, tank, and field need to comply with the required distances to the property lines, proposed structures, the new well, and all of the neighboring wells. My third point has to do with the density of the project. The total square footage of both buildings would be 14,800 square feet. It seems the applicant is trying to fit too much into this 1.9-acre site. I realize that the proposed complies with the code for maximum footprint and lot coverage and all that, but the size of these structures seems out of scale and out of proportion to the site. The density of the buildings is relatively high for the site, especially when considering all of the parking spaces required to hold all of the employees. There's also a chain-linked fence that is shown in the drawings. And if they're a fencing company, I would hope that they could perhaps install something more attractive to showcase their products other than a chain-linked fence. My other... The last issue is about the storage tanks. So they got rid of the storage tanks, but now the applicant application says that there'll be oil trunks, oil tanks parked there overnight. So isn't that the same, but they're just on wheels? And I just wonder about those overnight parking of the oil tanks. But my really... My biggest concern is about the septic system because it's on Clove Creek Aquifer. And so if that system fails because it's under a parking area, then we're all in trouble. Thank you.
Bettina, why don't you go next? And we all have your letter, just...
Yes, you have my letter, so I'll keep it short. My name is Bettina Utz. I live on East Mountain Road North for 17 years now. A lot of... A lot has changed since we moved here. I have similar concerns as Madeline just mentioned, but I want to go just into a few points. So proposed is four contractors in the back building and the applicant at the site visit, I went to the site visit in March, said that they're going to expand and then not have the contractors there anymore. So there is expansion planned, there's rentals planned. Where does all the traffic go in and out? I'm concerned about the situation here being so close to our road. I don't know how many feet that is, but it's so dangerous already to get out onto Route 9. Just today, I had an appointment and I stood there for three minutes and I couldn't safely get out. And then I did a maneuver that was probably not that safe. And it happens all the time. Slow trucks coming in and out will be a problem. The clearcutting is a big concern. I went, again, as I said, to the site visit and they had taped off the area that they're going to clearcut. And it's basically everything. There's a very thin buffer here towards Dan's lumber and that's it. 93 trees, as Madeline said. In addition, I am also concerned very much about the oil-filled trucks that will stay there overnight. I asked the question at the site visit and it was confirmed they will store oil there, just in a truck and not in a tank. These trucks leak all the time and we're still with the whole property inside the Clove Creek Aquifer overlay. Huge concern. Every drop counts with an oil spill, I would say. And the rest is in my letter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cheryl, who else you have?
Richard Butensky?
Hi, Richard Butensky for Seven East Mountain Road South. I have the same concerns that have been just stated and I'm very concerned about the exit, the entrance and egress out of the site. It's a very dangerous place to pull in and pull out of, East Mountain Road North. I can't imagine that trucks filled with oil coming in and out of there make it any safer. And yes, I'm also concerned about oil storage on the site and where it is and the aquifer. And I agree with what's been said before, so thank you.
Alice Crackhour, East Mountain Road North for 21 years. I want to echo all the concerns already stated and focus on the traffic dangers that this plan could provide. Okay, so everyone who lives on East Mountain will recognize the current situation, which is that if you're coming from north and waiting to turn on... For an opening to turn on to East Mountain Road North, you know, you're sitting here now, okay? Because there's so much room here because of old Albany Post Road opening, cars will always go around a car waiting to turn left onto north. They always do and they will always do that because they can, because there's so much room here. So here's my nightmare scenario. Okay, I did the math and a car travels... A car going 50 miles an hour travels 73 feet in one second, okay? That's 50 miles an hour. And this... You can travel up to 55 on this road. At 55 miles an hour, a car goes, I think it's 80, 80 feet in one second. Okay, so there's 50 feet, as I figure it from your site plan, between East Mountain Road North and the plaza. Okay, so someone's sitting here waiting to turn onto north. The car behind routinely will go around and keep going. And somebody coming out of this plaza will come out and say, hey, there's a car parked here. I'm cool, you know, I've got an opening, not realizing that someone's speeding out from behind here and in one second going to transverse this. And this car has no idea that there's a car coming out there because they assume that if there's a car sitting here, they've got an opening to cross to go south. So that's my concern. And also, you know, there's also similar problems with a car coming out of north at the same time that's a car or an oil truck is coming out of here. There's just... There's no time for course correction for anybody in this area. So I just want to say that I went on one of the site visits and the developer's representative was asked how many... How much traffic is going in and out? And, you know, it was, well, there's maybe one or two cars for this business and one or two here and then this. You know, it was dribs and drabs, but added up, it feels like a fair amount of traffic. And I don't feel I have a sense of how much is going to be coming in and out of there. I don't know whether you do, but it would be good to hear a total of what... Even in a day, what's expected even in a day, let alone a week. But so those are my concerns. I have to say that the word plaza makes me nervous because it implies a lot of activity. And if you do have to put up a chain-linked fence, please make it black. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
I like the old-school graphics.
Yeah.
My name's Jamie Copeland, I'm an architect.
Others have spoken about the need for some aesthetic guidelines for Route 9. I just don't see anything in here that reflects community, reflects the neighborhood. I'm a modernist. I like modern architecture. But Neil, we probably, we probably need to consider an architectural review board for what's going on on Route 9.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
I made the motion.
All right, second?
Second.
Are y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. I'll entertain any commentary from the board at this time. So we can hold it all over for next one. Dennis, please.
Well, I have to agree with the concern of people exiting East Mountain Road North. I mean, I travel that every day also. And if you're making the left hand turn to get onto the north road, Alice is completely right. People are flying by you as they, as they squeeze by, really mirror to mirror type of situation. And that is a major concern. When my kids started to drive, I pointed that out to them to always be careful and even better yet, go down to the south road and come up. Because I am on the south road. But that's a five mile shortcut going up to the north road from where I am. So that is a concern.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to iterate what Dennis is saying. So we brought this up when Dane's Lumber came up to us. We brought this up when Insight came up to us for the previous team before Dane's Lumber. So this has been an issue. This is something that we as a planning board seem to kind of unanimously understand that it is an issue. And for those who are on East Mountain Pass, it's, it's going to continue and it's just going to precipitately get worse.
So Steve, can you just remind us what our degrees of freedom are or are not related to this topic? We have been discussing this. I think you and Heidi joined the board right as we were dealing with the, I think it was called CRS, the still yet to be developed west side of Route 9, south of 301, Concrete Pillar Park. And there was a real discussion about semi trucks coming out. And that's when we started seeing a real acceleration of Route 9 projects. So Steve, could you just give us some sense? I feel like we've talked about this before. Thank you, Neil. Do we have any degrees of freedom as a board?
Well, you got to look at it on a macro sense and a micro sense. Macro sense, no. Route 9 not only is, is not only a state road, but I mean, you can't take one development and say, because of this one development, we're going to try to impose restrictions on it to-
Right, you tip the scales.
Improve overall, exactly. I mean, you can take it, if there were other developments in the area, you could look at the aggregate impact, that type of thing. But on, on one property, you're really haven't got it within your jurisdiction to say, we're going to try to fix the issues with Route 9. On a micro scale, however, you have both secret review here and you have site plan review. Now, a number of issues have been raised by the public. For example, landscaping, that's really more of a site plan issue than a secret issue. But traffic impacts are a secret issue. And it's the type of thing that, you know, you either could look further into, maybe ask for a traffic study. Or if you feel you have enough information, you may say that there need to be the limitations on the vehicles, truck, truck traffic in and out, that type of thing. There may be, and you can't impose them, but you could certainly see if the applicant's interested in it. You may have a need for offsite improvements, whether it's signage or, I don't think anybody's going to want to late on Route 9, but I mean, it's the type of thing that could be looked at anyway. So overall, no. You can't use this, this project as a fulcrum to try to improve Route 9. But you could take into consideration the condition of Route 9 and trying to make this the best project it can be.
Yeah, thank you for that. Other board members' questions or any response or further questions for Steve?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I know during the site meeting, you mentioned, you know, because we're going to, they're going to be storing the tankers on site. And you mentioned potentially installing oil water separators, some kind of stormwater, stormwater interceptor device, structure. Is that already been?
Yes, that's in, that's in the plan.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to-
Why don't you just say a little more for the purpose of the-
Sure. So the intention of the applicant, with regard to the storage of the, the oil service vehicles on site, the intention is generally to keep them inside the building. There, there could be the potential that at some point, one of those vehicles needs to be kept in the outdoor storage area. That area will be paved and it will drain to a catch basin that will be fed to what's called an oil water separator, which is essentially a baffle system whereby if something happened, it would be captured there before it went anywhere else. And that has been, through conversations with the planning board, has been integrated into the stormwater design of the, of the site plan.
And is there a maintenance schedule for that? Would that be just maintained?
Yeah, it would, it would be maintained generally like you would the rest of the stormwater system. And of course, if they're, you know, in the unlikely event of, of a problem, then it would obviously be cleaned out and would be dealt with at that time.
Where does that drain to? Does that drain, drain to a separate sewerage or does it-
It's, it's captured at the oil water separator. So the, so regular stormwater will bypass through, will go, will be fed to an infiltration system. And, but, but any, any oil substance would be captured in the separator.
I should have phrased it differently. Are you washing trucks on the site?
There's the potential that something could be rinsed off occasionally.
So that's a yes? Okay. I'll bring to your attention the new MS4 permits that are going to require separate sewer systems for washdown areas? And that's going to be, that'll be part, that'll be part of your review process anyway. So if it's not included in the details, you might want to think about that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Other board member questions? Dennis?
Yes. I know at, or your last presentation, I had mentioned the showing clearly the turning radiuses for incoming and exiting trucks. Is that now shown?
Yes. Yes, we did provide, just a couple things on the traffic concerns to clarify. One, we have significantly more than 50 feet here. Just want to make sure that that's clear. It's over 100 feet. But we did provide maneuvers. There was questions about how vehicles enter the site. Again, initially, it was just in concept, it was contemplated that we, that you would come through and you'd be able to exit onto East Mountain Road. Obviously, we've eliminated that. In a, in another previous iteration, we had a turnaround. In this iteration, we've, we've provided enough space that the types of vehicles that would be coming onto the site can enter, can easily turn around, can enter the, the parking area in the front and can exit the site. And we've, we've modeled that and that is also part of the site plan.
Is that taking consideration driver error as they pull in and they just miss that sweet spot? Because I've seen it many times.
Sure.
Where all of a sudden they get into a situation, they can't go any further, they have to back up. Might be a situation where they're backing up onto Route 9. If it happens one site, I really don't care, but I'm just concerned with that happening. And I've seen it happen many times.
Yeah, we can't-
I mean, it looks great on a plan, but you have to, the drivers have to know what they're doing.
Of course. And that goes without saying and we can't model errors.
I understand.
You can't show you every different way somebody could accidentally make the wrong turn.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just trying, is there a buffer taken into consideration?
Yeah, so the idea is, you know, with, with the maneuvers to show that it, it makes it through easily. It, it, it's not as though it's just, it's almost hitting the curb on this side and almost hitting the curb on that side and they have a very narrow way of getting in. It shows that it can, it can pass through with plenty of room to spare.
So if somebody's exiting, a truck tanker now, making deliveries, exiting the site, going north on Route 9, are they going to have, and again, I can't see it from here, are they going to have to cross the W O line going north, W O line on Route 9?
No, we can, we don't have that modeled here, but we can add that to the plan. And again, I also want to make, make sure it's, it's understood that this is all going to be reviewed. This is-
I know, it's on the DOT.
Right. I just want to make sure the public is aware that we're still going through a permitting process with the DOT for this, for this driveway. They're going to be reviewing site distances, the geometry, the width of the driveway and all of those safety elements. And that goes through its own rigorous process that we're still in the middle of with DOT.
Good, thank you.
Other questions, please?
So I just want to add to what Steve said with regard to the macro impact of Route 9. So since I've been on the planning board, we've talked about this and we've recognized the fact that, you know, pre-COVID to during COVID, a lot of these as of right lots have been not functioning. And, you know, to our benefit, there are businesses that are trying to come back, which is great. But it also means that there is an aggregate amount of traffic that we are allowing on Route 9. And so, you know, and S as planning board, as we're approving these projects and these developments, because they're as of right, you know, we are also part of that overall kind of concept of looking at it macro. So I don't know if we as a planning board can make another statement or push something forward because it is within our purview of what we're doing.
Steve, I'll let you, I'll let you respond to that, please.
Well, we've done, you've done it before. You've sent message to the town board saying, please look at this issue. It's a town board's purview if they want to take action in regard to the zoning, which is what's driving the addition of vehicles to Route 9 because of the development along it. The planning board, like I said, can make recommendations, but that's pretty much as far as it goes on the macro level as far as traffic on Route 9. Other than that, you have to focus on the project before you, again, you could take traffic into consideration, but you can't use individual projects as some means to try to address the, the overall issue of traffic on Route 9. It's, it's not what the code has you doing. You administer the code.
So not, this is not tied to you, obviously, and hopefully this is not, you don't take any offense at this part of the discussion. I'm, I'm absolutely happy to ask a town board member, say the one who represents the town board to the planning board, and ask him if we should come before the planning board, the town board, oh, thank you, sir. Come before the town board again and restate, and maybe we come slightly more enforced. I think, again, I think it was me and Heidi last time. Oh, Dennis, sorry. And so we go back and we have this conversation again. That is a worthy conversation, but as a friend said, when I first joined the board, our job is to apply the code, not to make it up. And so that's a, that's a difficult piece of work. Thank you for raising it because I think it's clearly part of the emerging, if not the present, concern of the community. Any other comments, please?
I mean, if we have, if we were allowed to request a traffic study, I don't know why we wouldn't do that. Because one of the issues with CRS was the, the number of trucks, the size of the trucks. I mean, and, and making sure that we understood how many vehicles and what size would be coming in per day and at what times during rush hour or not during rush hour, et cetera. I, I think we should request a traffic study.
I would, I think there's thought, a good thought there. I'd like us to be tight about what we're asking them to study, meaning like if it's number of vehicles, trips and visits, whether it's the number of vehicles that are passing on Route 9, that they'll potentially from the, the diagram of the skid around person, how many vehicles are affected. I think it's a worthy, we should just scope it out a little bit about what we're asking for. But Steve, your thoughts on that being within our purview?
It's absolutely in your purview. It's true that the DOT is going to look at the curb cuts. It's going to look at site distances in regard to the curb cuts and things along those lines. And it may overlap a traffic study that you would ask for. I think you should, if you're going to ask for one, be very clear as to what the parameters are because otherwise, you know, they're going to bring in a traffic engineer, he's going to say, what exactly are you looking for here? But it's, it's something you're entitled to do on your own. There are issues like, for example, was raised the question of are you creating a dangerous situation pulling in and pulling out along the roadway? And that's within your purview to decide. It isn't delegated to DOH, DOT, pardon me. So if you want to require that, that's fine, but I would urge you to at least have Ron, you know, work on sharpening what it is you're asking them to look at rather than just saying, give us a traffic study.
Thank you. I'll, any other comments, any other board members?
Have they been to, have you been to the conservation board yet?
Yes.
What kind of feedback you're getting over there?
Uh, this was, this was, this was back before, like in the, the early phase of the project where the, the tanks were still in place and-
Not, not with the new layout?
We haven't been asked to go back, so no, we've not. We're not asking for any permits. We're not required. My, my understanding is we weren't required to go back, so we, no, we haven't gone back.
So I'll, I'll, I'll take the floor for a minute and parrot a couple of things from the public that I think are worthy of talking about. I think, one, I think, do we have clarity about how many trees are coming down? I think that we heard the phrase clear cut. Is that a fair characterization of what's happening in the site?
When we were at the, the site walk, it was outlined. You can see that, yes, there are, you know, the, the, the site is undeveloped. It's just, it's undeveloped. So yes, there's going to be trees that are being cleared through the developed area. Again, we're staying clear of the water course area, the required landscape buffers, they'll be preserved. We're preserving an admittedly small strip between Dane's Lumber and, and this property, but we're buffering, we're, we're augmenting that with additional evergreen planting. We've also added additional evergreen screening along East Mountain Road to help screen that in. It was mentioned that, you know, there, the, the existing tree line is thicker in some areas and thinner in others. So, you know, we're happy to provide additional evergreen screening and, and we've done that and, you know, certainly-
What's the width of that screen you have there? That-
The width of, of this?
Yeah, thank you.
That's going to be something like, this, this drawing is one inch equals 20 feet. It's 15, 20 feet.
Okay. I, I, and just to be clear, that obviously the, the public is concerned, it predates you, but we've now approved three things in that corner before you. We approved revitalization of the Dane's Lumber, whatever it was before that became a project. The Pool Company became a new project. You're the next project. What was once, wouldn't say was unimproved, but it was less filled with things. And so I, I think you hear the, the commentary of the public, which is, we kind of moved here with a relatively underdeveloped, and that's not your problem per se, but we, your help is neighbors and I think you want to be here a good long time. So how we think about how to do that is important. The second topic I have is, and I think this is where the traffic or the volume study will be helpful because each truck that you have there that contains oil overnight, there's a, there is a point where it becomes a greater danger, no matter what catch basin systems you have. And so understanding in more detail what, and how many trucks, because there's a percentage of chance that oil spills, the more you have. We have a property to the south, Ron. What's the one that we had to clean up?
I'm sorry, I'm not recalling it.
River View?
River View. The, 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 the poorly named River View Industries Truck Farm that we had to clean up because of, because of oil spills. And so I'm cognizant also on Route 9 that that's not what you're trying to do, but I'm cognizant of understanding the, the volume potential of oil.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the applicant about, about that and we'll get you some hard numbers and-
So those are the topics for us. I think, I think we're certainly not in a-
Should I anticipate hearing from Ron about exactly what the study is that we should be preparing?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to make a motion to have Ron direct Ron to do something about that?
Steve, do we need a motion?
Point of order. In the hearing, you may all do for 10 days for written submissions in line with the additional information.
The hearing was closed about 15, 20 minutes ago. I mean, if you sent us a letter, we're happy to read.
Thank you.
We are, we are always open to reading. Go ahead. Steve, please.
Um, I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question was, do we need a motion for the, the traffic study?
To be on the safe side, I would do a motion. I don't think technically to you, but I, I think it's a good idea.
May I have a motion as outlined by Heidi to perform a traffic study of its specific details to be penciled out by Ron in conversation with us and then shared with the applicant in the next couple of weeks? I don't have a date, but motion, please. Neil, I saw you were- Neil, I saw you were second, Heidi, Heidi's second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you very much. Any other further business on this topic?
Can I just ask one more?
Yeah, of course.
So, sometimes, I know, um, sometimes we've asked applicants if there's anything they can do about some of the comments that we've heard from the public, if there's, for example, in this case, is, would it be possible to sprinkle some trees in the middle of the site, rather than have the entire thing be just paved in concrete? I mean, you're hearing from people that, that, you know, not aesthetically very appealing, and you're, you know, seeking permission from Phillips Town to do this, and, I mean, why not just try to beautify it a little, with a little less concrete, a little less paving in the middle of the site to make it just look a little bit more consistent, you know, with a more rural area, if you can?
So, yeah, we can definitely take a look at what is feasible, you know, but we also with the understanding that, you know, we have a site that's already constrained by, you know, almost a quarter of the, the width of it by, and, and it's a great thing, but we're going, yeah, we're going to maintain this water course buffer with existing vegetation. So, yes, we will look for as many opportunities as we can on the site to add plantings.
Do you see here's like little islands of trees you could put in there or something? I mean, might feel great for the people who are there every day as well, it's like healthy mentally for them.
Sure, yeah. No, we'll definitely look for opportunities where we can do that.
Thank you very much. Any other further, any further business? All right, moving on to our second public hearing, uh, thank you guys, Mace Carville. I don't, I don't think we need it, I think we got it in the video, thank you. Uh, okay, uh, waiting the applicant to set up, we'll do a little... Okay. All right, so you want to give us the brief enough, this is the project, please.
Sure. Good evening, I'm Keith Stout, I work at Cronin Engineering, we're here representing the applicants. Uh, the project site is at 429 Sprout Brook Road. Um, the project is for the construction of a two-story detached garage, but since it's located in steep slopes, the, the prod, the applicant requires planning board approval as well as a public hearing, and that's why we're here tonight. Uh, we provided information to the town engineer showing that, uh, where we're proposing the detached garage is probably the best location on site, and I think many of you who are at those site walk would agree to that. So, we're here tonight to have a public hearing, answer any comments, and hopefully we'll be back in June.
Okay. Brief version, please.
The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 16th, 2024, starting at 7:30 PM, at the Phillips Downtown Hall, 238 Main Street, Oak Spring. Consider the following application, Mace Carville, 429 Sprout Brook Road, Garrison, New York, tax map number 83 dot 13 dash 1 dash 3, project minor site plan, construction of a detached garage with minor driveway realignment, dated at Phillips Town, New York, this 18th day of April. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
All right, anyone wish to speak for this public hearing? Go once, go in twice. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. Uh, Ron, anything that prevents us from going forward resolutions for the June meeting?
No, not at all.
Steve?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, what do I, what's the, do I just move for, uh, for the approval of the site plan?
Well, we have to direct Ron to prepare the approval resolution.
Yeah. Approval resolution, may I have a motion to approve the, approval resolution for Mace Carville's detached garage, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Neil, second. Dennis, thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Ron, we look forward to your creation of that documentation, thank you for your patience, sir.
Thank you.
See you very briefly next time. Okay.
Tough site.
It's a tough site. I heard that garage is gorgeous. All right, let's, uh, let's move on to old business. Um, okay, so this is, um, I, I don't, Adam, I'm not sure you, we even, you need to say anything unless you want to say something, but, uh, this is for us as a board to talk in public session about what we heard at the last meeting, so, you want to say something?
Nope. Adam Stalero, here on behalf of Hudson Valley Shakespearean, we're happy to answer any questions you have about, uh, the site, site plan.
Okay. Why don't we start with, um, uh, Ron, just, actually, let's start with Steve. Steve, just give us a reminder for the public's benefit and the boards, where we stand with this project, where are we in the process, please?
Secret review has been completed, public hearing on site plan and subdivision, as far as the planning board is concerned, has been completed, the conservation board's public hearing regarding the wetlands permit remains open. I'm not sure when the next date is on that, they'd said the last time we were here, June 11th, June 11th is the next date on that. So, at this point, the issue for the planning board is twofold, you have subdivision application to consider, and you have site plan application to consider, you're considering them kind of in tandem. Um, the subdivision application, as we discussed briefly at the last meeting, is subject to a deadline for action, I believe that deadline will expire before your next meeting. Site plan is not subject to a automatic approval, or default approval, I should say, provision, so there, there really isn't a deadline on that. And you've got memos before you from your planning and engineering consultants regarding the outstanding issues, um, on the site plan and the subdivision, and you're here tonight to discuss them, both with your consultants and among yourselves.
Okay. All right, uh, so Ron, let's turn to you, you want to give us the highlights of what your, where you would stand from an engineering perspective?
Sure. As was described, they're, they're now at a point where you're, it's before you for consideration of both subdivision and site plan approval. Uh, the subdivision plan itself that's been filed generally satisfies all criteria from section 112 of the land development regs, so that is in pretty much final form. Site plan drawings identify both the overall, um, intention of the applicant for the full build-out of the project, and then specifically identifies for Phase One, uh, with more detail, the specific improvements that are necessary to advance the, the initial portion of the project. Uh, the technical memo that you have before you identifies a great variety of, uh, site plan issues relative to what's required by code, uh, they've been discussed informally with the applicant, but there's a variety of, um, more detail that's necessary, um, just to be satisfied that all technical details are accurately represented on plan. The overall, um, development of the site plan drawings illustrate what the board understands to be the initial phase of the project. The, uh, site plan comments that I've provided really relate to, uh, technical details that the applicant must address before they can advance it. Uh, very likely that the largest aspect of that would be the, uh, filing of a SWIP document, which, uh, they've given to you informally in a preliminary form some time ago, it still remains to be finalized. Uh, the applicant itself has asked that that be consid, a consideration or a condition of, uh, any site plan approval you advance.
Is that, is that typical?
I'm sorry.
Is that typical, Ron, to have acceptance of the temporary or the interim?
Uh, for the most part, um, this is a very large project. Uh, they've, they've preliminarily sized all stormwater features, which is the basis for the creation of a SWIP document, just to verify that, uh, facilities are properly designed, and there's, there's sufficient spatial area on plan, on, on the site, to, uh, construct those improvements that are necessary, uh, for the impacts to stormwater management. Um, as I said, this is a very detailed project, they've identified on plan where those facilities are necessary and what are intended, uh, it's just a matter for the formal SWIP document to advance the hard design and be sure that it fits within the spatial area that's provided on plan.
Okay. And then Aaron, is he over here? Hi, Aaron. Aaron, would you give us a, get some pretty voluminous memo?
Yeah, sorry about the length of the memo.
That's okay.
So, it's, it's meant to be a, um, just a, a record that, over time, so, um, first of all, Aaron Werner, AKRF, um, the, so dating back to January, we started that memo, and it was really meant to, my, what I wanted to do was make sure that everything that came out of the secret process, the E I S, the finding statement, the mitigation commitments that were made, pretty detailed in the finding statement, get incorporated into the site plan, because that's what the E I S said would happen. So, I went through all the different requirements under every category of the environmental review, um, and I asked them to make sure that the site plan set incorporates those, and mainly, a lot of them are, have been added to, uh, the notes section, which is sheet 14, um, there's a pretty lengthy environmental notes section that they added, and my recommendation that pretty much takes verbatim a lot of the language from the finding statement on certain issues, and places that into the, into the site plan as, uh, enforceable, you know, if it's, once it's signed by the planning board and placed, those are enforceable, uh, commitments that have to be met. So, all the comments I had on that aspect have been addressed, that's what the memo shows. Um, you know, I, it took three rounds to get there, but the latest version has those notes. Um, so, there's really just three main comments that I have that are kind of outstanding at this point in that memo, and I'll go through them now. So, the first, um, has to do with a soil management plan, which, uh, was, which came out of the E I S, and that's something that is required for construction because we're dealing with former golf course greens, um, there's, there's been identified some contamination based on the Phase One, Two, and Three, uh, studies that were done for the E I S, there's some soils that need to be taken care of during construction, so the soils management plan, uh, is, was required by the E I S process and required during construction. We've, uh, that's still under review, I plan to have my, my colleague, and hydrogeologist, geologist, expert, um, issue written comments on that between now and the next appearance. Um, overall, the plan looks solid, um, there's just some comments on related to sampling and soil handling that we'd like, uh, the applicant to take a look at, and we're happy to talk with your consultant that prepared it, once we issue those in writing. So, that's the issue of the S N P, or Soil Management Plan. Second, just the status of the, uh, wetlands permit, which is required for, um, the, the work that's being done within the buffer. Um, you at the, at the last, at the, at the, uh, public hearing that was held last month, made it clear that you weren't prepared to act on the subdivision and site plan until you know the conservation board's comfortable with their wetlands permit authority. So, um, what, what happened there was, there's a, the public hearing was continued to June 11th, um, I understand the applicant did submit a new mitigation plan to the conservation board that they're reviewing, so, um, you know, at least we won't know anything until after June 11th, as far as what, uh, their stance is on that permit. Um, the third main comment had to do with the landscaping plans, which I looked at. Um, I just want to make clear that the comment that's in the memo, I have to walk back a little bit, um, because the applicant made it clear to me that I looked at the wrong sheets on the site plan, or on the landscaping drawings. Um, basically, there was two sets of landscape plans, one of them showed the main core area of the site, the theater, the parking lot, um, but there was another set that I didn't get my eyes on, which was the, what was sent to the conservation board and also included, um, the treatment around the pond as part of the permitting process for the wetlands permit, and it also included the, the items that I identified as missing, which were the new plantings along Route nine and Snake Hill Road to meet the S P O requirement, the scenic protection overlay. Um, just to remind the board on that, so, that's section 175, 15G in your code, um, which I'll read out a little bit. Um, uh, to maintain a continuous green buffer, there needs to be at least 100 feet deep vegetative buffer along Route nine, and 50 feet along Snake Hill Road. Um, the D E I S identified a couple of spots to meet that requirement, on Route nine, there was a pocket of, of land there that was missing a lot of tree cover, they're proposing to plant that 100-foot deep landscaping area, um, as part of the site plan, and on Snake Hill Road as well, just west of the driveway, there's another pocket there that needs some screening. Um, that came out of the E I S, they modeled that when they did the visual impact study for the theater. So, when I didn't see it on the plan set I looked at, I got concerned and said, well, make sure you, you're showing some, the appropriate S P O screenings on those two roads, and actually, in the drawing that I didn't see, until they pointed out, they are, um, showing that. So, um, that looks satisfactory to me. The only thing I would ask for, and I think the board might be interested in, at least for the tree species that are proposed for the landscaping plan, that the architect, the landscape architect provide, um, like a collage of the images of those species that are proposed, so you get a sense of what, you know, evergreens and non-evergreen trees are proposed to screen the theater, um, which they, you know, like I said, they modeled that as part of the visual impact study in the E I S, so they already plan to do that, but I'm sure the board would like to see the actual species in image form.
I, I for one appreciate, A, that you are, so admits that you missed something, thank you for saying that, Aaron, that's big of you, and second, it all, uh, yes, some, some visuals, because I don't know half of these trees, but, um, not sure it really matters that I know what a ilex opaca is, but, it's a great tree. Anyway, thank you.
So, just the trees, I, I mentioned, like, I, I want to make it clear, I think every single shrub and, and seed mix and, might not be necessary for an image, that's a lot of pictures, but for the trees especially, which are providing a lot of the screening, um, that's appropriate, so...
We're, we're already working on that, so we'll have that too.
All right.
So, that's the extent of my, my review for now.
Okay. All right, so what we're prepared to do, gang, is just talk about what we heard at the public hearing, and I want to thank the applicant for your support of this process. Last time we had 12 speakers and received 17 letters that were basically 50/50, uh, in support or with some commentary in the other directions. So, uh, let me just open to board members, if there are any questions or thoughts that came out. Thank you, Heidi.
Well, I have a question, uh, that was raised both at the, uh, the public hearing and in the letters that were submitted to us, about trees that have been cut down on the property. Is it true that there's been trees cut down on the property already, or?
There were trees that were cut down, um, I don't remember exactly how many, but there were a handful of trees that were on the embankment of the dam that were cut down as part of dam safety maintenance, you can't have trees getting big on an earth, on an earth and dam, so, um, we did, um, the reason that the trees were cut down in March was that we wanted to cut trees outside of the bat protective window. Um, in addition to those trees, there was one tree cut, um, further up on the property because it was going to be in an area that needs to be graded as part of Phase One, um, and the work for Phase One, we hope will start before the bat window closes. Um, we did consult with, um, with Steve and with Max Garfinkel about whether we needed to pull a separate tree cutting permit, and it was determined that we did not, um, so that was just the one tree, other than those maintenance trees on the dam.
Well, usually people consult with us before they cut trees, if they're seeking permission to cut trees before they actually have approval for their project. We've been denying that, those requests, because we had a really bad experience with a applicant who, basically, we gave them permission to cut all their trees down, and then the project didn't go forward. Um, so, I don't know, I guess it's, if it's one tree, that doesn't exactly seem, but it's literally one tr, how, but how do you get, how did you get permission to cut those trees down that you're claiming had to be cut down because of dam safety? How many trees was it?
I think it was five trees.
And, and it's so noticeable to people, were they all in, they were all in one area, and were they big trees?
It's along, it's along the road that, you know, that enters the site, so it is, it was noticeable.
So, did you have to get permission to cut those trees down?
No. The, the town code allows, um, a certain amount of, uh, tree cutting, if it's under, I'm, I don't have the square footage in front of me, but we consulted, it, it was our interpretation, and the town agreed that we were, whatever, we, we could have actually done all of the cutting under this provision of the code, we ended up trying to minimize how many trees we needed to cut, um, but I understand that it's normally the course that tree, because it's in the town code that tree permits are given as part of the site plan process or the subdivision process, but you can also apply separately for a tree cutting permit, um, under the town code, but we thought that we fell under this exception, and, and the town confirmed that we did fall under the exception.
Yes.
When you say the town, town board, conservation board, it wasn't us.
No, Steve.
Code enforcement?
Okay, thank you.
Steve, you're the guy, I want you to talk about that.
No, this is very common, this happens all the time, as a matter of fact.
Say again?
This happens all the time, as a matter of fact. Um, there is a provision in your town code that says if you're taking down, as Adam rightly says...
No, no, this is very common, this happens all the time, as a matter of fact.
Say again?
This happens all the time, as a matter of fact. There is a provision in your town code that says if you're taking down, as Adam rightly says, a certain number of trees, and it's, it's below a, a certain square footage of trees, it's, it's really a pretty minimal amount, that you can go to the, the tree ward.
The Arbor, Town Arbor?
No, it's not the Arbor, what's his, he's our conservation officer, I think, it's Max.
It's Max.
And, and confirm that you're beneath that number, you can't just say I'm beneath it and declare yourself exempt, but if you can get it confirmed with the town that you are beneath the amount that's required for a permit, you can go in and clear that number of trees. Now, on subdivisions and site plans, most of the time, the trees near to be caught, cleared for development are way over that number. And when that's the case, they have to come to the planning board and ask for permission to cut down the trees prior to having their approvals. But that wasn't the case here, it was a minimal amount of trees, they came in with their plan, Max looked it over, I looked it over, they were clearly within the provisions that are allowed under the code for taking trees down, and so, that's what they did, and I believe we sent a written confirmation that they were under the number of trees that, that are required. So that's how it came about that some trees were taken down on the site, but there was nothing nefarious about it, it's, it's, it's happened before, so.
Okay, other comments, not about the tree cutting?
So, question about the, because there was a lot of comments about the theater on the ridge. In your early studies, you had a before and after taken from different view sheds. Have you actually redone that with the new design of the current theater?
The latest theater design, I don't think, has been updated, but the, everything about the new design visually would be less impactful than what was shown in the DEIS, so, I don't, I don't think that the latest fairly minor changes to the design have been integrated into that visual impact analysis.
I'm just saying, because I think early on, when we started, when we saw those view sheds, it was before your concept of landscape, it's before your development of the overall theater, so, it would be nice to see, kind of, how it gets integrated into that, because then I think, you know, it gives us an opportunity to say, like, it is less intrusive versus what we were seeing before. Because I think what we're seeing is, on a golf course, where it's completely bare, you know, structure.
I, I believe that, that the visual impact update in the DEIS does show that with landscaping from, you know, from across the river, from all the different view shed points, with a update, I mean, updated theater design in the sense that it was updated around the time that we did the scoping, from a tent-looking design to the, the current design that's, that does not look like a tent, that's more tucked into the landscape. So that with the landscaping is what's in the visual analysis in the EIS. There have been some slight changes to the theater design since then, but nothing, I don't think, that would, that would make a difference in terms of an impact.
I can, I can weigh in a little bit too on that, if that's okay?
Please.
Yeah, so, when, when this first was posdact, positive declaration requiring the EIS, the tent was proposed, but when we started scoping and they came in with the, the EIS, the, the design was what you see now, the wood structure, the low profile, lower profile than a tent structure. And, for the most part, it hasn't changed as far as its appearance, its overall size of theater, what really, I think, and you noted it in your comment letter, what changed was you, you had to add a water storage area building and a, a pump house for fire protection that are way shorter than the theater and behind it, and they're going to be screened further. But as far as the modeling in the EIS, they, they showed, they did a balloon study to locate where the theater would be. They took a bunch of photographs with that balloon there to show, just for them to be able to model the building where the balloon was. That's why they did that. Then they showed existing photo, they did a photo without landscape and then with. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and it's the finding statement in the EIS and everything, did a pretty hard look visually at this, what you're seeing now on the site plan, it really hasn't changed. And they're showing you the trees now, and they're going to show you the, the images of the trees, hopefully with the, the next go-around.
Other comments? Dennis.
There seemed to be a lot of discussion regarding the traffic light, I don't know, I know that's DOT and everything else regarding an ongoing or functioning traffic light versus a blinking light versus a light that's only used for performance nights, things like that. Any other, any information from DOT regarding possibilities?
Yes. One thing that I learned since the public hearing is that the light is going to be operated in what's called fully activated mode. That means that it's green on Route nine all the time, until someone pulls up to Coleman Road or to Snake Hill Road and trying to get, there's sensors there, so, which I hope addresses some of the comments that we heard that were worried about trucks having to slow down and restart at that intersection, as though there was a light that changed from red to green all the time.
Can you share that with us?
I can share that in writing.
And it's a really important piece, because I, yeah, it keeps coming up in this notion, which is not hard to imagine, if anyone drives on that road, you're going sixty miles an hour or more going north on Route nine, you come over this hill south of Snake Hill, the light changes theoretically and you hear either a car braking, which you wouldn't hear, or air breaks off some semi, which would be both loud and unsafe, and I think that's a fearful, although it would happen in the case you're suggesting, but not nearly as often.
Yeah, and, and part of, so, I want to share some more information too about the DOT process. So, you know, we did a full traffic analysis for this intersection as part of the EIS, a very detailed traffic analysis that showed that currently, people trying, we actually have heard a lot tonight about people trying to turn onto Route nine. So there are already delays of over one minute, trying to turn from Coleman Road onto Route nine, that would be made worse by the project, and so the traffic light is really intended to mitigate that effect and to improve both the performance of that intersection and the safety of the intersection. The DOT process right now is, is basically a design approval process, it's not a yes-no, is there going to be a light there, is there not going to be a light there? The traffic study shows that there's a warrant to have a light there, there's a need for it, DOT has agreed that there needs to be a light there, and so, you know, the process that DOT is going through now is really about the technical design of that intersection and how the light fits in, and making sure that they're comfortable with what's going on.
Adam, you mean, sorry, you meant Snake Hill Travis Corner, it's not Coleman. Coleman doesn't have the signal.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Steve, could you just weigh in on this, because if the applicant has asked DOT and we effectively tacitly endorse that by approving the project, and then they come back and do not do what Adam is saying, what did you go to, fully, was it in the lighting system, fully?
Oh, fully activated.
Fully activated, so it's, although it sounds strange, since it doesn't sound like it's not fully activated, anyway. If they come back and it's not fully activated, so it's a just normal light that's on a timer, and it does cause this challenge of breaking and loudness and, what's, what sort of?
Well, what's going on here is, this is an off-site improvement. Off-site improvements are offered by applicants in order to allow the project to be developed to the extent that they want it to be developed. If it wasn't for the off-site improvement, you would, which you can't require them to do, they would have to make some change to, to make a lesser impact to that particular aspect of it on their project, and they have to make it smaller, for example, or limit the number of visitors, or whatever it may be. So, it's not a condition you're imposing, but you can note if and when you adopt an approval resolution, that this is an improvement and an integral part of your approval, it's based on this offer of, of an off-site improvement by the applicant. If you have that in your resolution and it's clearly stated and the applicant does not come through with that particular improvement that they've offered, the off-site improvement, you would be justified in saying that you haven't satisfied the requirements of your approval, frankly, justified in, in vacating and reopening it, saying this particular important improvement that they've offered is not coming to pass. So it's not like it goes by the boards, but it's important to have that specifically called out in your approval resolution, in fact, you probably want it as a note on the site plan.
I, I, I for one, on the interest of my colleagues' view, given the volume of commentary about that last time, I think having a, a light that is not, that is only permanently green unless some traffic is brought to the inner seating side road seems a pretty necessary, and it'd be a major lifestyle change for that intersection. I know we have someone who lives right at that intersection in the au, yeah, in the audience, thank you. Thought I was loud enough to carry my way through it, so. I, we have someone in the audience who lives at that intersection, so he and his, his family are well aware of that issue, so, I don't know if we think about that, we can take that as a, as a, as a particular note when we get there, but then, temperature of the board on that topic?
Regarding putting?
The light and the way the light is structured?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds good. I do have another question regarding that, I don't know if you have the answer, but in some locations, especially if you're coming down a hill or over a rise, and there's a light, especially a new light, a lot of times, there are warning lights indicating, I think there's one at three oh one, if I'm not mistaken, indicating that there's a light further down the road. Would that be taken in consideration? There again, I don't think you would know that now, but I'm just wondering if that would be part of that discussion with DOT.
It's something we can look at, I, I don't know if it's already part of the discussion. Sure, Margaret.
There are warning indicator signs, both northbound and southbound, required by the DOT, and they're part of the application.
Signs, I mean?
Well, the one that is?
Late, flashing light.
Flash, there's an existing flashing light, southbound, there is not, there's an existing flashing light just prior to the existing entrance, that warns of the intersection coming ahead, so instead, we're going to take out that intersection sign and put a traffic light sign that indicates there's a traffic light coming up. There are two proposed warning signs when you are northbound. At present, they do not have flashing lights, and we can look at it, I mean, it's, it's DOT's permit, so I can, I can talk to them and find out if, you know, if it's, if it's warranted.
It's been part of the discussion, I guess my question was.
Yeah. The other thing, Ron has asked that we include the DOT plans as part of the site plan set, so, anything about the light and the intersection, those plans will be part of the site plan set, so you don't have to have a separate note about it, because all of the plant, you know, so it's another, I don't know, twenty, thirty plans that you'll have in your site plan set.
Thank you. Other questions? Board members. Heidi.
Another issue that's come up a lot is the sighting of the tent, obviously, and one thing I was wondering is, wondering is, and noise, noise, is it true, there seems to be a perception that if the tent, or the building was, theater was not sighted on the crest of the ridge, that it would be less noisy for the neighbors? Is that, is consistent with what you guys found? I, I wasn't sure if, I guess, and I ask that because I was wondering if there's been any thought of, you know, in the event that the theater does blow the noise ordinance for the town, we're sort of, it's going to be kind of an awkward situation for the Shakespeare Festival, because you can't move the theater, so, and I don't know how quiet you can make it, you know, people need to hear what's going on. So I, I, I just was wondering if it might be kind of reduced risk of that sort? If, if, if it is the case that if the, that if the theater is not sighted on the crest of the ridge, that it would not be as noisy for the neighbors, that there might be some thought given to taking that measure? I understand that you want it there for the, for the dramatic, you know, location, but after all, if it blows the noise codes, it's going to be a really, really big problem. I don't think the neighbors are going to be, are going to suffer it silently, and it will, besides the fact that it obviously very severely impact their lives, it will be a bad situation for the Shakespeare Festival as well. So I, I just, I just throw that out there, that if it, if it were, would be quieter, if it wasn't on the crest of the ridge, maybe it would make sense to consider that option.
Noise didn't drive, you know, where the theater is going to be sighted on the property, if it were down where people are suggesting, you would basically, the theater goers would have a view of the parking lot, rather than a view of, dramatic view of the river, which is what Shakespeare intends. We, you know, if, if we had a noise study like that with an alternative location would have been part of the SECRE process, starting with the scoping, it wasn't, we don't have, you know.
Wait, are you suggesting that an alternative location wasn't ever suggested?
No, it wasn't part of the SECRE scope.
That's true.
Sorry, continue.
You mean technically it wasn't, because I mean, I know it was discussed an awful lot, I mean?
It wasn't, it wasn't part of, you know, the SECRE scope defines what's going to happen in the EIS, and, you know, this, the issue about the location of the theater was, has been an issue all along.
Yeah.
It was not one of the alternatives that the board said needed to be looked at during the EIS process, and so it wasn't.
That's correct, I mean, the, the alternatives didn't include an alternate site for the theater. The alternatives, I believe, included the, a tent theater.
The tent design.
And the entrance off Snake Hill Road, which ended up going away, the bridge. There wasn't a contemplation of making them do a, having the outdoor theater at an alternate location, that wasn't one of the alternatives that was scoped, so it wasn't studied in the EIS, and this board adopted findings that there were no significant adverse impacts for visual and noise.
Let me, let me just take, make a statement at this point, so look, I, I think, I think that's probably, that's very legalistically correct, obviously, I mean, it's a factual statement. And I think we would not have found there was a environmental impact from the sighting where it is now, so that's, I think, why we didn't put it in. I think what I've heard, you said it's been an issue all along, I think that's correct, Adam, it has been issued before you joined this project and since you've joined this project. The volume of commentary from the public, your neighbors, for a long time, is the sighting. It's certainly not the only thing, but it's certainly some that remains. And I think it would be useful to have you guys just think for one last time about whether there's any accommodation you can make. I'm not suggesting you should be looking at a parking lot, that is certainly not something we are talking about. I do wonder, and I would say that of the twelve speakers from last time and the other significant number in previous rounds, they've made several suggestions, whether that's further down towards the river or slightly further back, and it's worthy of just, because I think it's something that, we don't have the public hearings as a theatrical activity, we actually want to hear from the public, right? There's a reason we do it. And so, our role in part is to represent the town, and those people came and speak, represent the town. So I'm asking you, as a chair of this board, to have your applicant and your colleagues just think a bit more about that set of commentary, because they're not saying it for fun, and we're not saying it for, we're not all sitting here for the heck of it, otherwise you'd just have an administrative stamp on the thing. Code meets it, yes or no, approved, but we're actually talking about why people come, and that's why they came in this room, and that's why we've been talking about this. So you're right, it has probably been the most consistent issue, not the only one, there are a couple other topics that come up here and there, there are a couple others I heard that are worthy of talking about, but that is a perennial one. And I, I, by saying this, I'm not suggesting at all that you haven't been, as an, as an organization, accommodated. I think there have been many changes that have made this a more appropriate scope project than originally conceived, and I, I do appreciate that, I know my colleagues appreciate it, and certainly, I think, if I spoke for the public that comes and talks, I think they've appreciated, even though you may not have noticed it. But certainly, twelve people coming in this round was a lot less than the, I don't know, Cheryl, fifty-somethingsomething coming in the multi-night version we did a couple of years ago. So, my ask of you is to just give that a thought, and even if everyone laughs around the table, is my God, we're not going to think, do that, it is worthy of us asking you to do that.
I will take it back to that.
Thank you, sir. There are two other items that were noted by the public that I just want to raise. One is related to, I, I, I'll need some support from, or some advice from Steve, there was a commentary about the housing complex, and whether, if there was a lack of funding, that they would be built, would those be spun off potentially to a for-profit corporation, and then we have a different venue. That didn't sound like site plan approval, since we're not developing the housing for, for phase one, sounded like a subdivision question, but the points, I was a little confused by the points, so I don't know if whether either of you, maybe Aaron, who, who copiously wrote it down, have a view about that point that's raised.
Or maybe both of us.
Or maybe both of us. The zoning doesn't allow for standalone housing, it only allows housing for, um, artists. Um, it does allow some rental, uh, of the facilities when they're not being used by artists, but they wouldn't be permitted under the zoning to subdivide off, um, the housing or have them as standalone housing units. They have to be used, uh, in regard to the artists lodging there. So I, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
So the concern is not a valid concern, or couldn't happen?
Uh, it's not under present zoning, no.
Okay.
All right, good. The recent local law that was passed for this Garrison Cultural Conservation District.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
That's what Steve's referring to, the recent local law that the town board passed for this project, specifically for this site, was pretty clear about that, so.
The, the second one I want to note is, um, there's a gentleman who's come before us a number of times, uh, speaking plaintively about his fear of noise, and I believe he lives on, um, Phillips Brook Road, the lower part of it, and, uh, I, I, I want to just get your sense, Adam, from our noise study, does that particular corner, and I believe this gentleman lives in the northwest corner of the property, or near the northwest corner, I don't know if you have a view about whether we took a noise reading from that gentleman's spot? Not, we're not all, we're not all, um, uh, under the, the, uh, the right to have a quiet and completely noise-free experience, you know, that's what happens when you live near different things and things happen, but he, I wanted to acknowledge his comment and see if we have a view on the noise in that corner.
Um, I can, what I can tell you at this point is that, um, Shakespeare is looking at phase two, and, you know, where housing is located on the site, and that will be part of that discussion, and if there are major changes that change anything, um, you know, that could potentially require a new noise analysis, but, um, there were, there was anal, you know, noise analysis at various points around the property, I don't know standing here whether that was one of them.
You just help me marry up, and maybe Cheryl can provide you the gentleman's name and address, I want to just give that a, I don't recall if we, how close we got to that one.
Okay.
And then my last one is, I'm, this is a general statement, I, I am, I am interested, and I think my colleagues are as well, in hearing what the, the conservation board has to say, I, I think they have an important, uh, set of views, there's, there's enough parts of this property that are affected by the wetlands, that it's worthy of hearing, uh, their results. On June 11th, and maybe Cheryl, we can invite Andy and Max to come back, uh, for our board meeting that is soon after, so they can provide us a live summary of, uh, of what they, they've discovered.
If you like, I can give you a quick update on what-
Floor, sir.
Two nights ago, we had the conservation board meeting, um, they had a number of questions, um, one related to the, some new water treatment, um, infrastructure that's in the wetland buffer, they wanted that to be part of the maintenance plan, uh, the mitigation and monitoring plan for the wetlands, we were putting it in there. Um, they had a number of comments about the location of the plantings, and so, some of the plantings from the southern larger end of the pond, uh, I don't know if you can see here, so this is like the southern part of the pond, the northern part of the pond, the northern part of the pond is shallower than the southern end, um, what they've asked is that we shift some plantings up to the northern end and make this more of a marsh, um, because it will, because the water level of the pond has been drawn down due to the dam, which is something that would happen with or without the project, um, there's been more plantings put in there, um, and, um, that's sort of where we are with them. So they provided comments, and they've been, they've stated at their meeting, um, on Tuesday that they plan on taking a vote on the application at their June 11th meeting.
Was, was the hearing kept open?
The hearing, uh, was kept open from, they had the joint hearing in April, and what they said in April was, we'll open it again in June, so the, the, the meeting two nights ago was, uh, just a board meeting, it wasn't the continuation of the public hearing, so there-
The public hearing is still open?
It's still open.
Okay. All right, any other comments, folks? Aaron.
I have the map of the noise receptors on my screen.
Great.
Um, so there was one receptor that was taken, uh, like northeast of the cluster of, uh, artist housing between the housing and Phillips Brook Road, basically like near Route 9, um, and then there was another, there was actually a receptor on Phillips Brook, but it was further west, and it was intended to capture the theater modeling, number five.
Why don't you two, you and Cheryl should talk, because Cheryl can give you the gentleman's address, and I'm just, I, I don't want, we're not going to talk about publicly what are the guy's addresses, so.
Right. And I-
There was two receivers, there was two receptors-
I got it.
In that area, two.
And I just also wanted to add that that's not part of the site plan approval that we're seeking, or the subdivision approval, it will be a question for the phase two.
Okay. Any other comments tonight? Okay, thank you for the Folsom conversation.
I did just want to note, um, at the, at the outset, that Steve had mentioned that there are time limits running on the subdivision approval, um, so at the, at the last meeting, um, what we said is we would authorize, I don't know if it was at the last meeting or in a conversation with, with Steve, but the board has through and including the next planning board meeting at least to, uh, to consider and vote on the resolution, so, um, there is also a time clock, I would note, on the site plan, not just the subdivision, because you're required under state law to make a decision within 62 days of the public hearing.
But there's no default approval on site-
There's no default approval.
So if you go over it, there's no consequences.
Yes.
So, so do we need anything at this point, Steve?
No, I, I'll go through the next meeting.
All right, good. Thank you. All right, guys, uh, next order of business, Lake Surprise Revocable Trust, who is, uh, Glenn Watson.
We had our, um, Lake Surprise, you had your site inspection.
Yes.
Um, I can get out my board and show you again, but you all saw it on the ground, so I'm here to seek you, uh, seek a public hearing on the matter, so we can move forward.
Any comments from the board members on Ron's memo from the site visitor, anything you want to share from it, otherwise I'll ask for motion on the public hearing. Any comments from the visitor? Okay, hearing none, can I, thank you, can I, uh, hearing none, may I have an approval for a, a motion for a, uh, public hearing to be scheduled?
So we'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion, what's, uh, next date, please, Cheryl? I guess it's the next board meeting, so what am I, next board meeting? Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and then, uh, Vasta, nine, Cliffside Court.
Hey, Dan, my name's Luis Ruiz, I'm Amanda Vasta's future husband, fiancee, so I'm here to speak on her behalf, she's not be able, can't make it today.
Okay, uh, well, let's start with, let's start with, uh, Ron, just give us a summary where we are.
Right, the project's been before the board for an extended period, uh, really just trying to get an understanding of the specific, uh, approval authorities that are involved in the project. The lot itself falls within the newly created Upland Drive and Ridge Road Development District, overlay area. Um, I've been through the code, I've discussed it at some length with Steve, and there's multiple boards that are involved in this approval. Specifically, what they're looking for is, is ODA approval for access to the lot, that's a matter that comes before the planning board. Um, there's also going to be a need for zoning board of appeals approval for at least one issue that's, uh, within the newly created regulations for Upland Drive, uh, and that relates to disturbance of slopes in excess of 30 percent, uh, that obviously is the case for this application, because there's significant, uh, slope across the entire tract, um, so the ZBA referral is required. There's also other questions as to, um, bulk requirements for, um, that come out of the Upland Drive regs, that the town attorney can speak to in terms of whether the two-acre minimum lot size that's specified in the new code, uh, play, applies to this project, since it's only 1.12 acres in size, uh, and there's also an issue that, uh, the coverage requirements for the overall lot can only be 10 percent, while the applicant's development proposal involves almost 20 percent of lot coverage, uh, so, that again, is a question for the town attorney to resolve, whether that stays with the planning board to consider, or whether that requires a ZBA review, and then lastly, the conservation is likewise involved, uh, because they're involved, uh, they would be involved in review of any land disturbances on slopes of 20 percent or greater, as I've described, almost the entire site is, contains slopes in excess of 20 percent, so under 17536B4, that, uh, referral needs to be made, um, so other than that, I can refer to the town attorney, but the, in terms of process, um, you would first want to declare this as a minor site plan, just pursuant to your code, relative to seeker, it actually represents a type-two action pursuant to state law. Um, another consideration you want to discuss tonight would be whether you want to conduct a site inspection of the property to understand the impact of these new regulations and intended site development, and then I believe you'd, uh, probably like to make, uh, the, the boards at, uh, secretary, make referral to the necessary agencies, Department of Health is involved, as I said, zoning board of appeals should be notified, and very likely you, uh, typically make referral to the local fire department for their review and comment.
So, so Ron, uh, I feel like we're not, and maybe it's just I haven't noticed the pattern, I feel like we're inconsistent about when we have a ZBA real issue. Sometimes, I thought usually we refer to ZBA and wait for resolution before we pick it up, but that's not what you're suggesting tonight.
No, again, there's, uh, there's, uh, a lot of approvals, uh, involved in it, there's a lot of balls in the air, it'd be good to get, get, uh, the process started, um, as I said, planning board has some specific requirements in terms of ODA approval, um, so a site inspection's going to be necessary, that's something I think you can accomplish.
But if ZBA came back and, let's say, did not accommodate the change, is this project still can go forward?
No, without it, uh, they can't move forward.
Right, so Steve, can you weigh in on this? Because I, I, I also don't want to waste the applicant's money and time and this board's time doing something that has a, another, a binary entity in front of it.
Well, here's, here's the thing about this application, it's kind of split into two. The one aspect of it is the ODA road, the ODA road has nothing to do with the ZBA.
Yeah.
That you can kind of put on the back burner for now. The other issue, though, is the steep slope development, and the steep slope development has to go to the ZBA, because they're over the percentage, but the ZBA, because it also has to go to the CB, is going to want input from the CB, and very likely, the planning board, or at least the planning board's consultants on it, because the ZBA doesn't have consultants who talk to the issue of steep slopes.
Understood, okay.
So you're right, it is a little inconsistent, but I, I agree with Ron in this particular instance.
We're, we're basically an outsourced, uh, input entity. Okay, interesting.
You hit it on the head, exactly.
We're working, so we know the hierarchy of the boards now, apparently, okay. All right, so I get it, and-
So if I could just touch on the issues-
Yeah, yeah, please, please.
Real quick, real quick. So, um, the town enacted the Upland Drive Development District, and in doing so, imposed different bulk requirements on lots that are located within it, and it didn't have a grandfather clause, so any lots in that district are subject to those bulk requirements. However, there's another section of the town code, um, 175 dash 26, which deals with non-conforming lots, which any existing lot in the Upland Drive District became, if it was under the size, for those new bulk requirements imposed by the town board. Now, the grandfathering provision in 17526 says that if you, um, can meet certain requirements, you have to have at least 5,000 square feet, you have to be on an ODA road, um, you can, um, build even if your lot is undersized, so the two-acre requirement, assuming that they can put their prop, their building on there, meeting, um, rear, rear, and the, the particular provisions as far as the dimensions for rear and side lot setback would be okay, they would not need a variance as to lot size. However, lot coverage is not included within this, so for lot coverage, they do have to go to the ZBA, so that should be in your referrals. Now, I have a number of things to say about the ODA road matter, but frankly, I don't think you're in a position to reach it just yet, so I'm going to save that for if and when they come back, unless you want me to carry on about ODA roads now, behalf of the goal.
I don't, I think it's 117, I don't think, unless you want-
I believe it was, um, the, uh, the square footage, the size, and road frontage that we needed divariances for. Because I believe it's 200 feet of road frontage?
It's memo, but if you want referrals for those, I'm sure the board will be happy to give them to you.
So we just wanted referral to the zoning board.
Yeah, well, let's, let's, so I don't mind taking, if, if you both think, from professional opinion, it's fine for us to move forward with some of these pieces, and it's in the applicant's best interest, we'll, I don't have a problem moving them. Board member questions? Let's just say we're starting an administrative process, it feels like, after, and, and all, and so, sorry, one more thing, uh, I think this is for Steve. So Steve, a lot of what held this up before were a number of violations, I recall.
Or is that going to go forward, well, there were outstanding violations?
And they're all resolved?
I don't have information on that.
Oh.
Okay. Yes, I believe we resolved all of them, I think we sent the memo to Gainer, the engineer sent you the breakdown list of what we had resolved.
I can't specifically recall if, if, uh, we've seen those documents, but I believe that I've heard from the, um, town CEO that the violations were cleared. There were issues as to construction prior to any approvals and various notes with activities being conducted on the site, and, uh, it's been my understanding that the CEO has determined they, uh, they have cleaned up those violations.
Okay, fine, because I, I, yeah, we would have wasted everyone's time if we hadn't had that cleared. Okay, so look, let's be expedient, can I have a motion to, uh, classify this project as a minor project?
So I might, um-
Thank you, Dennis, second Neil, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Do we need a vote that it's a type-two seeker action?
It's appropriate, too.
Okay, if I may have a motion to declare this a type-two seeker action.
Make that motion.
Thank you, or second.
I'll second.
Dennis, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Uh, referral to the ZBA, which is really the key piece here tonight, under the conditions and topics rate listed by Ron earlier, may I have a motion for that referral, please?
So I might.
Thank you, Neil, second Joe, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Uh, referral to the Department of Health, please.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Dennis, second Heidi, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Referral also to the fire department, Joe, second Dennis, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. And then a site inspection, which I think is necessary, although let me, let me ask, uh, Ron and Steve, do you think that is necessary, given what you said about our role in supporting the ZBA, is it premature for that site visit?
You're, you're being asked to waive town road standards, I think it'd be appropriate to evaluate the site.
You're going to need it sooner or later, is the issue, if the ZBA denies it, of course, you won't need it at all, but-
Well, that's my point, do we, that's my point, do we just-
It would be helpful if, if you're going to comment to the ZBA, if you want and see.
Fine. All right, uh, any discussion on that, people okay doing a site visit? Apparently the slopes are steep, bring your, bring your sticks and walk and stick, exactly?
A carpool, too.
Carpool, too, okay, right, all right, well, uh, Cheryl?
Well, carpool and Laura will drive everybody up there.
Laura? Did the big car? Oh, she's in the truck, right? The, the, it's a hybrid. May I, uh, Cheryl, dates on site visit, please?
Um, second or the ninth of June?
Second or the ninth. Folks have a preference.
I'm going to leave the one.
I am not available on the second, my daughter's graduating college.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, so I will not be there on the second, you guys can go ahead, I trust you. Yes, the ninth? Okay, I deputize Neil to be, uh, the facilitator of said meeting.
What day?
The second of June.
The second?
The second.
Is that good?
Yes?
Why not make it the ninth, so you could come?
We, we can't, we, if you, I-
Just kidding.
Uh, we can make it the ninth, if you want my presence, the, the presence is granted, the ninth it is. Everyone like the ninth?
The ninth, or what?
Well, I don't really, this is, I, I'm sure, I'm sure our friends at the library are ready to get us to pick this thing all ready.
Yeah.
So the ninth or the second? The ninth?
Ninth is fine.
Okay, the ninth is fine. The ninth is it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes, sir, we'll see you on the ninth of June, and you have your referral to ZBA, anything else on this topic? Hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, I am going to recuse myself, as I'm a 12-year-long member of the library board, I will pass the baton to my left, uh, and Dennis Gagdon will, uh, facilitate the meeting, and I'll come back up, uh, for any new business. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
Dennis.
Gee, thanks, Neil.
You're welcome, sir. Neil, you weren't here yet, so I, I went to my, my second vice chair.
Why don't you go to the cabinet?
Did you go to college?
Uh, you should.
Oh, really?
I'm not leaving door. Don't you make fun of me down here.
Feel free to jump in anytime.
Yeah. Now she's a little bit tissues.
You ready?
Yeah.
Ready.
Margaret McDonas and she has the project with Lady Mottson. I just want to acknowledge that we have three or four board members here. Anita Prentice and George Lansbury and Mike Roush are all here, along with Neil. The project proposes a pavilion on the far side of the parking lot. It is half open air and half enclosed. It'll be used for storage for items, mostly for the book sale, but other items of the library. And it is envisioned as an extension of the library, not in additional services, but the same services that are provided at the library will also be provided in an outdoor setting because we all lived through COVID and now we know that we might need some outdoor So basically, here's the library, the entrance road stays the same, here's the parking lot. This is where we're proposing the new pavilion and there'll be a couple of patio, open patio spaces. This, this part is open and this area over here is closed. So the project does not propose water or septic for the building. It's open during the business hours of the library. You can just walk across the parking lot and use the facilities there. We do have a landscaping plan that we've developed. There'll be bollards provided along the edge of the parking lot. We will provide you with a lighting plan when those had not been selected, so we did not develop the lighting plan. But other than that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I have a question or a couple of questions actually.
Michael.
Mic up.
Thank you. The overall square footage, the footprint of the pavilion and the open area, I, I'm coming up with different calculations, so I just want to confirm, and I just spilled my water on your drawing. It held up well, but with the open patios and the storage area and the pavilion itself, if my calculations are right, and I didn't take off my shoes to do the counting.
If you're talking about additional impervious surfaces?
Yeah, just the overall footprint. I'm coming up with 2,544 square feet and I see a couple of other places, I'm not quite sure. I'm assuming the square footage is going to be based on this drawing.
Correct.
Albeit wet, but.
Albeit wet. I believe that the roof area we had indicated was 1936 and there's.
Well, you've broken it up and also Ron had commented on, if I'm not mistaken, on the enclosed pavilion, an enclosed area portion, 24 by 24, which seems to match it. So I just, I just want to clarify that the overall disturbance area.
Oh, the disturbance area?
Yeah.
Not the impervious area.
Well, I'm looking, I'm taking that the, the patios are concrete, correct?
Correct, but the disturbance will go up the hill and around.
Other than, other than that, I'm talking about just the pavilion itself.
Just the pavilion and the, and the, I actually, I don't think I know that off the top of my head what exactly it is.
I'm taking it that this is what you're going to be going by this.
Yes.
If I could speak to that, just to.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Ron.
Move it along. The, the structure itself, the pavilion itself includes an open pavilion area and then an enclosed area for storage. That totals about 2,500 square feet. I'm sorry, it's about 2,000 square feet, but there's an additional 576 square feet as an open patio to the east of where the pavilion, pavilion lies. So you're correct, the overall square footage of what they propose, propose for physical improvement exceeds that 2,000 square foot number.
Okay, thank you, Ron. I am, I'm sorry for the hesitation, I'm just trying to organ myself, organize myself out here with some wet paperwork. Hey, Ron, or Steve, what would our next step be regarding this? I'm just looking for my notes and I'm.
Yeah, I mean, you have some administrative things to do. The applicants described the project. The board actually had approved an earlier project in 2021 for the walking trail there and some outdoor improvements in the rear of the existing library. So at this point in time, pursuant to code, you just want to first classify the project given its magnitude and looking at the overall scope, you'd deem it as a major project. That would be the first determination to make. With respect to seeker, it's an unlisted action. Again, for seeker, you'd have to look at the overall impacts from the earlier project as well as this. And so as part of that determination, when you first declare it as unlisted, you, following the guidelines you used for the original project, you'd mandate that a coordinated environmental review be accomplished. That could be done this evening. There are standard referrals that are necessary based on its location along 9D. And again, with the intermittent stream in the front, I'm suggesting that you make referrals to the conservation board. They were involved in the original project. Should not be impacts, but you should give them an opportunity to comment. And then lastly, you determine whether you want to have another site inspection to evaluate this latest proposal.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, so basically the first step is to get a motion to declare this as a major project? Can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
Um, Margaret, we, we know we had a good turnout last, or was it two years ago now with the solar panels, so we know, we, we know, we kind of have a feel for what this public hearing is going to be like. So let's, let's, let's practice, okay?
Well, I can tell you.
So hang on, hang on, let me, hang on, hang on. So you know what's coming. What's coming is why is it there in that front of the field? And if it's storage, well, okay, that's what, that's what the line of questioning is going to be. It's a storage facility, why isn't it out back? And then, you know, why, why, well, that's, that's going to be the big question. So what, let's warm up.
The library has done extensive outreach to the local community and has had a positive reaction to the building, its location, and its appearance.
Okay. And I'm, I'm.
To mostly the person that you.
Well, not now, because I, who, who did you, who did you reach out to? I mean, this is a community dynamic thing that I'm interested in because when you came to us with the solar panels, you had gotten a lot of positive feedback also. So this time, who are you getting this positive feedback from?
Tim Rasic, I'm a former board member, I'm the art, design architect for the project. So, oh, sorry. So the library, we did learn some things from our first go around and we went, or the library went to the immediate neighbors who were most vocal about the previous project and we did actually review different sites on the property with them. And where we settled on this site was because it is behind a hillside and it is nestled here, whereas if we put the structure out in the field, it would be more visible to the neighbors. So the neighbors, you know, people changed their mind, but we were told that this was a very attractive site from their standpoint because it really wouldn't be visible to any of the immediate neighbors.
And how about, anybody ask about putting it behind the building?
Well, as part of our, it doesn't show on this diagram, but we did a beautiful walking path.
I know Frank's garden there, right.
Yeah, so we did a beautiful walking path and there's a beautiful tree implanted area here, which is very serene and a lot of people use that space, so.
How about, yeah, keep going to your right. Nope, the other way.
Over here?
Yeah, how about over there?
Well, in, in terms of the function for the building, it made sense for us to place it in this location because it can be visually seen by the library office from this window. You can see them maintain it. So part of it is also to have some sort of supervision during the day when the structure's being used.
I think, I think, I think they're going to get the pavilion use as being part, I don't think they're going to like the storage use. I think, I think you might get hung up with that.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm trying to be constructive, that's all, yeah.
One of the things that came in your pocket was we took photos along Route 9D. We also took them along Route 403. We have staked the building, so we can put up balloons if you're going to do a site visit so that you can see the impact, how much you'll see with leaf, well, we're not leaf off anymore, are we? So, um, these, these are all areas along Route 9, starting here, 1 through 6. So it's, oh, is this the?
This is.
Yeah, so this is Cat Rock Road.
This is the floor.
So this is, starting here, looking, going towards the intersection, the different views and the, the natural screening that's on the site. And then this is on 9.
D.
9D, starting at different sites and actually taken from some of the neighbors' driveways. So we would see what they are, so these are the different views. And the site is, you can't even see it, it's right behind here.
Do you have anything that superimposed of the pavilion on those photos?
We don't have that, it, it could be done, it's.
I mean, we're just looking at a field.
Sure, so, you're, you're looking at a field, I guess now that we have it staked, we could put balloons and.
Figure out the orientation.
And, and do that, but this is the view of the structure.
Yeah, I'm just saying on, on these photos, we're looking at the open field.
Yes.
And it doesn't really, doesn't really represent anything other than an open field.
Yeah. What we could, what we could do is actually have balloons on the stakes and take photo, do another photo study.
Well, I think what Dennis is alluding to is similar to Hudson Valley, what they did is when we were looking at the view sheds for the overlay, right, they basically superimposed the structure, right, as a massing, right? And you insert it in just so that it helps you in the long run because then it's like, this is what the building kind of massing looks like and then your existing, you know, screening. And then if you're going to put in any sort of additional landscaping for whatever reason, then you add that into it. And then you look at it and during the cooling seasons and then the warmer seasons where you see foliage versus none.
The balloons really don't emphasize the structure itself, to be honest with you. Unless, like for instance, the Fishkill Cell Tower, okay, that's the height of 150 feet, fine, it's kind of hard to depict what would be shown on there, so. It doesn't have to be elaborate, this has to be, you know, just a block showing it, so.
Can I just ask one other question? So I know that when we were on the walkthrough that you have like seasonal wetlands because there are flooding areas in, kind of near there. I think you're far away from it enough. But it would be helpful to understand where that is because I didn't see it on your drawing. Or maybe I missed it.
I think they ended up being classified as ephemeral streams, yeah.
Yeah.
They're not so ephemeral anymore.
Did you ever talk about what's in the back over there?
No, the one that's in the front, yeah.
You had a little on the, I remember on the solar panel submittal at the pathway, you had a bridge that was crossing, okay.
So this, this is the wetland buffer.
Right.
And the project is here.
At that distance? Approximately.
About 60 feet from the buffer. So you'd be 160 feet from the wetland.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, did we make a referral? I mean. No, yeah, I cut you off. Okay, that's okay. Thank you. Can I get a motion to declare this as a major project? I'll make the motion. Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Right. Regarding, I think next step would be referrals, I'd like to make a motion. Steve, can we combine these referrals?
Well, yeah, you can, but first, if you declared an unlisted action under seeker.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, yeah. Can I get a motion to declare this as an unlisted seeker action?
I like that motion.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Regarding referrals, Steve, can we combine them?
39M and Conservation Board.
How about the Garrison Fire Department?
Courtesy referral, sure, if you want.
Okay. And so it would be the Garrison Fire Department as the courtesy, conservation, and then also county planning, I would say.
County planning and the Conservation Board, exactly.
Okay, can I have a motion for that?
Michael, motion.
Second.
Second? You got that?
Yeah.
Joe, thank you, Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I think we're done with this one, right? If I'm not mistaken, Steve?
That's it, site visit?
Oh, site visit, yes.
Oh, site visit, I'm sorry, that's right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anybody like to make a motion for a site visit? Nope.
You?
Going once?
I want to do a site visit.
Okay, make a motion. I was just saying, I've been there a couple times.
Well, because I want to see.
That's fine, you have to explain why.
All right, whatever.
Okay, thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or no? No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't need to see it, that's all, just. Can we, Cheryl, is it possible to do it also on the night, same day?
I would think so.
Is that good for everybody, the 10:30?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Pete, can I just say something that may not be strictly speaking relevant, but I was wondering if, I mean, since the solar project got nixed, I was wondering if there's any way the solar panels could be put on this building and then you'd get, achieve your original.
You proposed that.
Sorry, we didn't talk about that, but yes, we are integrating solar.
Oh, I didn't say, I missed that. Oh, probably.
We have this section of roof where we have a small solar array and we're going to have battery backup in the library.
Oh, so cool.
So it's also supposed to help support the community in case of a natural disaster, you know, place a refuge.
The statement of use goes into detail about it.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Okay, so site visit. 10:30 on June 9th. Is that good for everybody?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, Neil, thank you.
All right. All right, any new business for the committee, board? Hearing none, all right, next meeting is?
June 20th.
June 20th? Okay, very good. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, meaning adjourn, thank you very much, Ken.
Thanks.